Well, welcome to Straight From The Source with Haley Watts. We're doing things a little bit different today with Addison Winslow, Chico City Council member for District 4. Now, this is part 2 of the interview, but we're starting off with it because we just ran out of time last time. We were talking so much about housing, really big issues in our community like the homeless crisis. We didn't really get a chance to get to know you at all.
Yeah, there's a lot of policy stuff. I could go on and on.
Yeah.
And I think it's worthwhile too, but I also appreciate that you're trying to be more inclusive about who we are as policymakers or whoever you have on.
Don't you think that there's so much of like the human element is lost in politics? I mean, we vote for people, right? You represent certain values that people in your district felt very strongly about, then they aligned with you on them. But at the same time, I mean, every single person who's a politician is also a human with their own likes and dislikes. I mean, tell me-
We have personalities whether you wanted to vote for this personality or not. We just come out with it. It's more of a reelection thing as people have gotten to know now, do you like my personality or not? Well, on the flyers you get in the mail, you can't get that across.
Right. What was that whole process like for you of like, did you always think in your mind that I want to be a city council member?
No, no, no. I was, I mean, even just a few years ago, and this was part of like the campaign stuff, was bringing up things that I said in public meetings some years before, which I think makes it pretty obvious I didn't have any intention to like have a political career. I was like an activist showing up to meetings, right? I was more like on behalf of the community who are like victimized by these things going on that we're talking about in part 1. And, no, it was really like, over the course of time, like showing up to things and working with people and finding that people seemed to think that I'm good to work with. Other people kind of had that reference, and then people kind of proposed in like a group that I wasn't a part of to ask me to run for office and, yeah.
Interesting.
It was a little flattering, you know?
Yeah.
It's nice that you don't think that people automatically dislike me.
Right.
Wow.
Did you, like, you have a full-time job that is not this. People, I think people get confused. Sometimes they think being a city council member, like you get paid a full-time job salary. It's not. It's on top of your life.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, so, things have changed a little bit recently. When I started, it was $600 a month. That's what you get paid as a city council member, and that's what I expected it would be the entire time I was in office. I didn't have a full-time job. I hobbled together living through property maintenance work and so little contracting things. Whenever I got elected, I got a job, it was like a W-2 job, but being the maintenance guy for a community on the edge of town, doing like yard maintenance, fixing stuff, there's a number of buildings, elderly folks that can't do all those things themselves. And I could kind of be out there as much as I want, there's always work to do, so I can go out there, I gotta repair the machinery, whatever. And I found that I was consistently deprioritizing that paid work in favor of doing things on the city council, to where I was, I was really like struggling. Like, I actually think that I probably was the most broke-ass city council member that Chico's ever had. But then the state changed a law which increased our pay. Because the city charter said we get what the state says is standard, our pay increased from $600 a month to $1,900 before taxes, which was a huge like transformation in like my ability to do things. Because I was really struggling like at that point, and I was looking at getting a full-time job, which does make participating in local politics very difficult. I mean, I'll say that when I, the first 2 years I was on the council, me, the other 6 people were either retired or business owners with employees. A couple of them, a couple of them, like they had businesses they had to work for.
Yeah.
But that does suggest that normal people working a job where you don't create your own schedule are not well qualified for the position because people just don't do it, right?
Right.
This increase in pay, I think, enabled a lot more people of different economic means, not being retired, not owning businesses, not having employees, to participate and become city council members.
Interesting.
So, I still, like the majority of my pay does come from city council right now. I just live on a low standard of living, but I'm able to dedicate more time to this sort of thing.
As a maintenance worker, what was like the craziest, weirdest call that you ever responded to essentially?
Well, I worked for CHAT, Chico Housing Action Team, and you know, CHAT rents like houses that are sometimes kind of rundown, and we get people into it who really need to have that kind of thing. So, all kinds of things. One morning, somebody had, they thought they were hitting the brake and they hit the gas and then drove into the townhouse, into the bathroom.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, so I had to like, there's a hole in the building.
That happens kind of a lot.
There's water coming out. Yeah, and then it's like bad septic tanks, that's another one where it's like, oh, yeah, it's flowing, it's backflowing. Like the septic tank is pouring into the house and that's kind of above my pay grade. It was. I mean, there's things I need to do for that, but we get Clean Right Build Right.
Yeah.
That's probably an ad for them.
That's great company.
They do the work, they do that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Disaster cleanup.
Sometimes I feel like it's, gosh, I try to push chores on my stepsons probably more than they want, but I feel like that there's younger kids who just, they don't really learn how to take care of things in the house, and it's just like, oh, just call the guy, call the guy. And like, you know, I have people who have like ruined entire piping in their house because they thought they could pour bacon grease down the drain. It's like, you can't do that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and this was like one of the septic tanks overflowed, and they're like, yeah, for a while, we've been seeing bubbles coming back up.
Yeah.
Bubbles is not good. Don't have bubbles coming back up.
I think there should be like more hands-on education and like bringing, raising people to just how to live in the world and do things for themselves.
Maintenance for CHAT was kind of like you're part social worker, part maintenance worker. Sometimes I felt like I was like the more friendly approachable person than the people who are like their official social workers. And I think it is important and valuable, and people should do it with tenants in general, is to give them a little like explainer.
Yeah.
The university had a thing that was like, you get a certification to like be a tenant. I don't know all that it consisted of, but it was supposed to help you be preferred by a landlord.
Interesting.
But they would teach you things, and I assume they would teach you things like, don't pour bacon grease down the sink.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen in the, in the Chico State dorms, when they have their own kitchen, they have a little, they have to keep up this thing that tells you how to not burn your house down with your, which is important. You know, people do have to learn how to do that, and we do have, you know, people work full-time jobs, they pull in money, but then they're exhausted, and so when something goes wrong, you're like, call the guy. I have money, I don't have the means to figure this out on YouTube or whatever. And so, when I worked for an electrician, my first like big construction job, the majority of like service calls that we got was like changing a light bulb, that's what it was. Like, that's what it turned out to be. Your breaker's not broken, or your breaker flipped off, and it's like, you gotta turn it all the way off, turn it back on.
So, I've got the opposite problem because my husband's in construction, and so he knows how to do things the right way. And I've always been, like, he was the first person I ever really lived with. I've always been on my own and I just take care of things, but, I mean, I do things with a hot glue gun that should be done with a hammer and nail, that kind of stuff. So, I've learned a lot over the last few years, and I always resist the urge to just ask him to do it for me. I always try to say like, okay, just show me how to do it, right? Because the goal is, it's so great to have partners in our life and people we can rely on and be a community. Everybody has their own strengths, but I like to know how to do stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's great to have the people to help, you know? I start, when I started to do, on city council, and I was doing jobs like myself, and I didn't, so I didn't have anybody to help me, and so I had to figure out some things, and you know, you go on YouTube and you can figure it out, but at the same time, now I'm thinking about whether this is gonna work or not in the middle of the night, when I have other things to think about in the middle of the night. And it made me not want to do that anymore. I prefer to work with a team so that, and being, being an employee has the benefit of you don't have to think about it in the middle of the night. If something goes wrong, it's really not on you because, yeah. There is, yeah, there's a real, real benefit to that, especially when you do have other things to think about in the middle of the night.
Totally. Yeah, for me, it's always like a song that I wake up in the middle of the night and it's stuck in my head and repeating. Are you into music?
Yeah, yeah, I play, I play, I play some guitar. I don't like perform much.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, yeah.
So, like, kind of, like, when you're home alone, is it like Bob Dylan vibes, or what kind of guitar are you going for?
Bob Dylan's not far off. Yeah, I do, I think fingerpicking.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, it's like mostly folk style, you know? A little bit of like, like I learned some like classic Mexican songs and stuff. Yeah, and it's, yeah, it's a good hobby thing, but out in front of my office, in front of Naked Lounge, on Saturdays especially, there'll be a bunch of people playing music. There's some wonderful, wonderful musicians in Chico. I really think that the music scene in Chico right now is, is at a really good high point. For different genres too, you know, not just people playing acoustic guitar, folk artists, but there's like this whole like country honky-tonk scene.
Okay.
And the punks, the punk bands that are like 18-year-olds that play there.
Yeah, this Naked Lounge?
Uh huh. Yeah, Naked Lounge shows that night.
Friday, Saturdays, any night of the week?
Uh, yeah, actually.
You need to get out more at night.
Because I have my, I have my office upstairs, so I'll be working late, and then I can just, I can hear. They put out the sandwich boards, you can tell there's a show going on, but it will be like sometimes like Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, there's Naked Lounge shows. And it's a lot of, it's a lot of like young people, people much younger than me that are planning a lot of these things. It's great, some of the bands are incredible, yeah.
That makes me so happy to hear. I've always felt like music is this special magical thing where it's like, it's like, it's fun, it's amazing, you get to be creative, you don't have to have money to do it to participate, you know, to a certain extent. And, yeah, it's beautiful. There's not any adverse consequences of it, like certain things like chocolate's amazing and magical, but you eat too much, it's not so great for your health, you know?
It's the kind of thing, like fixing things in your house, like, I think everybody should be able to participate some in making some music. You don't have to be like a, you know, you have to put your whole life, you don't have to base your life around it.
Right.
But it should be part of our lives, you know? We should be used to being able to jam and sing and dance and-
Even if you don't have a guitar, just start singing terribly like I do.
You can, yeah, absolutely.
I have a confession, I have a karaoke machine in my house.
In your house.
And sometimes when I'm home alone, I just put on the karaoke machine and I just start going singing.
Well, did you know that next to Naked Lounge is a karaoke spot? You can have a private karaoke room.
No.
Yeah, I know, they're open late. It's right, right next to Naked Lounge.
Are they open kind of early?
Um, I feel like I see people going in there in the afternoon.
Okay, like 6:00 or 7:00 or 8:00? I go to bed by 9:00.
My confession is I have not been in there.
Okay.
But I do know some of the owners, and I see people going into it, and I see people coming out like they had a great time. So, I recommend-
Okay, I'm gonna check it out.
Bringing your team out there.
I'm gonna check it out. So, what else when you're not doing city council stuff and, you know, working on whatever you're working on? I mean, any other things? You're from Chico, right?
I'm from Chico.
Are there any like hidden gem things that people in Chico just need to know about?
Well, hidden gem things, like, yeah, there's places all over. The most beautiful thing about Chico, and I think what makes it such a like special place to be, is that we have this real city. And like, you know, talking about Second Street, it's like, this is like an urban area where there's people that you've never met before passing by all the time. But also, we just have this proximity to these beautiful open spaces, like the Orchard to the West, you got the foothills to the east, and we got Bidwell Park, you got different creekways, and Little Chico Creek and Linto Channel also have just like wonderful spots all along it. So, there's all kinds of places around there. I won't describe all the places that I know, but when it comes to like what is like the gem of One Mile Pool, and I know that people, and I feel like I, anytime there's a, there's an actual news story on One Mile, people will be like, you shouldn't swim in there. And that's fine, you don't need to swim in there. You know, there is a point where too many people would be there, we're not there, and I think that's good. So, if some people want to believe that it's like not-
I mean, they scrub it out every week. The water runs through it consistently.
We test it, we test it all the time, but it's wonderful. I've been in a lot of places and I have not ever seen anything that good. It was a Works Progress Administration project, like a New Deal thing, and it just continues to serve the community and, yeah, yeah, there really are. There's one in Austin, we have to pay for it, there's a little one in Lake County that I found, but it's, One Mile is just unique in what it is, and it really makes Chico a beautiful place, and it's nice to have it like in a, in a daily routine I pass through there. And this time of year, start to just go swimming every day, like, and, yeah, when I pass through.
It's pretty special. I like Upper Park too, and my friend and I, we used to always walk in Upper Park every day. And then some, we had this feeling that we were being watched, and I was thinking, it's gotta be a mountain lion. You know when you feel eyes on you? And it's so funny because I've never in my life ever seen a mountain lion, and my husband likes to say, yeah, but they've seen you. Have you ever heard of anybody like sighting a mountain lion up there?
Well, they've come down into, into Chico, like I think around like Forest Avenue, and like some, we get out there with a tranquilizer gun, just pop them on, and they wake up like back in the woods.
Yeah.
And, yeah, it happens every once in a while. I haven't, I didn't, like, nobody's ever told me that they had encountered a mountain lion out there, yeah.
It's so beautiful.
I ran into a mountain lion once in Oregon.
You did?
Yeah, I was, I was at a tree sit. They were gonna log this like old second growth area Douglas Firs, and there was a bunch of earth-first activists who had put up a platform like 110 feet up in a tree, and we were just camping out there, hanging out. And I was, I was looking for places where we could like pull supplies in if they cut off the roads, so kind of marching through a dry creekway.
Yeah.
And my eyesight's not that good, and the sun was kind of going down, and I kind of came around a bend, and I was like, what is that giant dog doing out here? And then it jumped away, and I saw that little puff at the end of the tail, and I was like, that wasn't a dog, that was a-
A chills.
-mountain lion, yeah. I had this little tiny pocket knife I pulled out, and I was like running up there, like trying not to turn my back, got to a, got to a hill, and then I, and I howled, because we'll just do that, either just like howl, and then the other people at the camps, like they howled too. And I think the mountain lion like got the idea that's like, don't mess with these-
Right.
-tree sitters out here.
Right.
We didn't see them again.
Oh, my gosh, it's crazy. And they're such beautiful animals, and part of me just loves the idea that we have all this wildlife out there. Bears, we see bears all the time, especially as you get into the paradise area, but you've got to respect nature and be prepared and aware.
Mm-hmm.
Especially, yeah, like I wouldn't go out by myself in Upper Park for sure.
Policy and personal interest combined, I would really like to see us restore thule elk and pronghorn populations, just connecting these like preserves through the foothills. And they really need wide ranges, we have so many fences up, and that is one of the things that deters them. But there's, there's reserves for pronghorn antelope like up in Modoc County and such, and, but they used to roam these areas. I mean, before we had cattle like that, those were our grazers, and I think it'd be great to like restore more of that wildlife population. Chico's a wonderful place to like, like reintroduce as much like nature and wildlife into the city as, as is compatible with human life and-
Yeah. It's so, I have another interesting kind of thing for me. I've been vegan, vegetarian most of my adult life, like 20, I've been a vegetarian since 3rd grade actually.
Wow.
And I married a man who's a hunter. And it's funny because everyone says, how, how do you, you know, I don't know, be on the same page with that sort of thing? And I just think it's like if everybody who ate meat had to hunt that animal, like he will shoot one deer a year, and that's 2 meals a week for the whole year, right? And that deer didn't have to live in a slaughterhouse. And so, I know, he always talks about, he like elk up here, but he thinks it'd be great for hunting. How do you feel about that sort of thing?
I mean, that's, there's a, there's a balance in that.
Yeah.
And I say, I say like, as much wildlife as is compatible with human life, and partly what I have in mind is like predators, we can't have so many like apex predators around because we're gonna start to like have some tragic situations.
Yeah, the wolf thing.
But, but when you don't have apex predators, like humans, humans have occupied that place for thousands of years out here. So, it's totally appropriate. There's, there's a balance, and I think there's a way that we can manage our ecosystems to have like large populations of game that actually do support a lot of people eating.
Yeah.
Maybe not as efficient as factory farming, but maybe, maybe it could be, you know?
Yeah.
I think these are technologies that are, I mean, really like old, this is like indigenous wisdom, is like managing like herds of elk, you know, for food, but also them able to serve their purpose in the landscape and grazing.
It's so interesting. There, the balance is a key thing. There's so many things out there where, like I was ranting and raving about Monsanto and Roundup and all this stuff with a girlfriend of mine who's very smart, and she said, no, I hear where you're coming from, that, yeah, like it'd be great to not use that kind of thing, or certain pesticides, all the crap that they put on our foods. But she's like, you know, but, I mean, the amount that they could produce would drastically go down, and what about widespread hunger? And it's funny how for every idea, there's a counter idea, right? And there's just so many things that play into everything that we touch.
There's a big, big balance in it. I mean, like the way that we have this like mass production of agriculture is also like displeading the soil.
Yeah.
In the long run, it's like we are at risk of that, and we have the climate changing, and this puts a lot of crops at risk. And so, I think there are like adaptive forms of restorative agriculture, regenerative agriculture.
Chico's a really cool thing.
I mean, oh, we had our governor just visiting our regenerative ag center out here, because we are really like pioneers of that out here.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's a lot of like good ideas. Sometimes people come up with things, it's like you can produce more food on a smaller footprint, but it's like there's a ton of labor involved in it. But I think as, as we adapt, we'll find ways to, to make it, make it more efficient, and we just, we can't continue doing the same kind of food system that we have been doing. But a lot of things are about to change now as we're getting, you know, tariffs on our exports of agriculture means we have to reconsider what we're gonna produce because we're not eating all of our corn, we're sending it out of the country, and now they want to be more self-sufficient. And that's probably a good thing in the long run, is that people grow their own food where they're at, don't rely on systems of international trade in order to feed themselves.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I, and it does open up, you know, possibilities for a lot of experimental regenerative agriculture and stuff. And I think we're the, we're the hotbed.
Up and coming here.
This is one of the best places in the world to grow any kind of food.
Okay, before we move on to the next section where we get into housing and that kind of stuff, one thing about you that might really just surprise people.
One thing about me that might really surprise people? Um, hmm. You know, I did a lot of, I think when I, when I talk about like my, my past and history, like I don't have a college degree, right? That's one thing. It's like I'm not a, I wasn't a white-collar worker. I've done some, some work like that, and obviously now I have more kind of qualifications and probably will. You know, I think about like, should I be a plumber? Like, yeah, that's stressful in the middle of the night, and it's like, maybe I can do some other things. But I spent a lot of years hitchhiking around and living in different cities around North America. I've never been off in North America, but, but I've spent, I've lived in Mexico, lived in Canada, and a lot of parts of the United States. And I think that that was a super enriching experience, and I know it's like a weird thing, most people aren't gonna be able to do that, but like hitchhiking around, you meet people, like, well, you sit, you sit in passenger seat, and like people pick you up because they want to talk to you, so you just learn all kinds of things of different perspectives, hitchhiking across, across the middle of the country. You just meet people that I wouldn't meet out here. And, and then going, going to cities and being able to just like take your time to explore cities, find out the places that you like. It was a really good experience in that I had this sense of what makes a good place, you know? I found the places I felt the most comfortable where I could, especially socially, where I could meet more people. And I knew nothing about urban planning then. This was all just like, like naturally started to understand these components of what makes a good place. And then once I got into that sphere of urban planning here in Chico, now it's like I understand all the aspects of what make good neighborhoods and places from, from other places. And that was, that was from the time I was like 19 until, I mean, the time I was 24 and I moved back to, I moved back to Chico.
Yeah, now you're back home.
Yeah, and I've, now I've been back here for, I guess as long as I was doing that for, but for a while, that felt like that was my, that was my adult life.
Yeah.
Was a lot of wandering around, working, working odd jobs and stuff, but, yeah, and I love it. I think more people should do something like that. You know, Europe has their like gap year, people take the trains around, there's a hostel system. We don't really have the same accommodations here, we should.
Right.
But you have to improvise a little more, and this is back in the day when couch surfing was a thing.
Oh, I was a couch surfer for a while too.
Yeah, I remember you mentioning that. And for people, this is like gonna be the after, but, yeah, so couch surfing will resurface in this interview.
Yeah. So funny. Okay, well, perfect, yeah. And with that, I think we'll just segue into the next section of our conversation. So, I remember when you were running for city council for the first time, and I remember thinking that you looked so young, first of all. Tell me, like, I guess, yeah, I mean, you are kind of in stark contrast to a lot of the people who were initially on that council and when you got elected. I mean, what was that like walking in that day 1?
It's funny, it's just like, you know, it's an honor to be on your show, and I guess the first, I don't know how to describe myself, but I feel like also in contrast to other people you've had on so far.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I mean, I was like 20, about 20 to 50 years younger than everybody else, but also, and probably more standout was, I'm like left-wing and just have a different viewpoint on things, which has been like dominant in Chico at a lot of times, you know? It's been maybe flip-flop back and forth, but-
Well, and I think it's kind of like district-based, right?
It is now.
Like sometimes more like the campus area.
Well, certainly. I mean, the way that, the way that things have shaken out in, in the longer term now is that we have the central and south Chico districts that are very progressive, and we have 3 of us who are 30 and under representing them.
Yeah.
And then the 4 northern districts are more split, and, and most of the people who won those won with smaller margins. Yeah, walking in, I wasn't really sure, you know, I didn't have a one-on-one relationship with the other council members except for Tom Van Overbeek. We had met while we were running for office, and we had sat down and talked about like the joint interests we had in downtown, walkability and some stuff. So, I had like a little bit of a feeling that like that could go well, but also like Tom is not somebody I would, I mean, identify as like, I'm gonna be good friends with that guy, you know? And we have divergent viewpoints, he's very strong in his opinions, something I appreciate, but also like, you know, how, how could I anticipate working with him is like not, not well. So, I was, I came in initially with, with 6 items that I tried to get on the agenda, and part of it was like, I wanna just provide clarity on like what sort of things I would like to do, and if they're, if we're gonna have these like hard political lines that are gonna, you know, essentially marginalize me from having any discussion topics, being take part, influence decisions, then, then these are the sort of things. We're talking about like housing stuff, safe street stuff, even like crime prevention to revival design on bike paths. That was the only one that I got a second on, and it still failed 3 to 4 to make the agenda.
Oh, gosh.
Because we need a majority just to have a discussion.
Yeah.
And so it was like tense. And I mean, I'm sure you remember from all the coverage that it remained tense for those two years with like, like I became like more or less like friends with the other people on the council.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we developed good relationships and we're able to have like really strong arguments in public that with heavy consequences, but still, you know, like make jokes about it and stuff.
Right. Like there was mutual respect.
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, to an extent, you know, there's, there's like, uh, there's like a realm of the way that we have different opinions where like, yeah, we can't say we like fully respect that. And so we argue about it, you know?
Yeah, don't respect the opinion, but respect the person and their intention, maybe?
And I mean, and a lot of it where things really like boiled over because I couldn't get things on the agenda, right? So it wasn't like I'm able to talk about like, we should, you know, like legalize this form of housing throughout the city. That wasn't even, we didn't really even get there. So a lot of the things that we argued on were like process oriented. So, you know, we had, we had like the Valley's Edge hearing. That was a very soon after I was on the council. And that was obviously very contentious and then led to a referendum.
What do you think of Valley's Edge? Sorry to interrupt. It's such an interesting, it's such an interesting project. And it's so, I've never heard of a project like that being so controversial.
Oh, no. I mean, just here in Chico, it's happened before. Yeah. I mean, it's these big ambitious plans for sprawling on the out of town is probably one of the biggest like dividers in our, in our community. And I mean, as you see with the referendums, most people are very sensitive to the way that Chico grows. You know, it's the pace of it for some people. But in my mind, I mean, that that site, you know, Valley's Edge is a project, but that that site of land is the largest potential addition we have to Chico. We have no other opportunity to like comprehensively plan our city in relationship to a place.
Yeah.
And so I think we ought to have high standards. And our general plan insisted that we did have high standards because, you know, they bought that when it was agricultural land. In 2011, it was zoned to eventually be a housing project, but with the understanding that there would be significant conservation, that it would be really built oriented towards our housing needs. And, you know, and this one of the, one of the big differences on the council is like, what's our relationship to housing needs versus what they'll call like the market?
Yeah.
The market is like the people who have enough money to really pay for the kind of housing that they want. Well, we have all these other people who like wouldn't qualify as the market because we can't afford to buy a house.
Right.
So we're not really like the drivers of that. But we still want to make sure that in our land use planning for the city that we're accommodating the needs of those people.
What, what in your life got you to the point where you started to feel really passionate about this, about housing?
About housing? Um, you know, it's kind of like falling in, you know, you're concerned about like the the big picture things and housing. There's something called like a housing theory of everything, that every, every problem we have like intersects with housing, or it's partly a housing issue. And if you look at greenhouse gas emissions, people have to drive because they live in these places that are separated from the things they need. And since by large distances that we built our streets the wrong way. So you can't safely get from place to place. And it's having housing in the right places, the best thing that we can do as a city to address climate change, like by by far. Yeah, it's affordable affordability issue. It's an economic development issue. If we want to have businesses locate in Chico, they need to be able to pay their workers something that works, you know, here. And there's, and, um, and having cheaper housing is is the best way that you can have like a comparative advantage over some of these metropolitan areas. So if we can solve our housing problem, then we can like largely address issues with employee retention and in recruiting for businesses.
Yeah.
Yeah, I lived, I lived in Montreal for time. I was kind of traveling around a lot when I was, when I was younger. And, um, and I met a lot of people that were involved in these like movements around housing. There was a, we put on a conference called, it was on community control of land and housing. Through a big community land trust in Montreal that the city had helped people purchase in the 1970s. It was all historic housing that was going to be raised. But a neighborhood association fundraised in order to preserve as cooperatives. There's like 30 something cooperatives that all operate together. It's really kind of like the gold standard for that sort of thing. You're not, you're not dependent on private market. This is affordable housing for people to live in the city, to do good things. And so they have people who work on all these volunteer initiatives. I always did that conference and the next day the campfire happened. And I think as far as like it being like a, like I didn't see myself as like a housing guy. This kind of came into being over like years of being in this sort of work, working for Chico Housing Action Team, working like the shelter system in town, too. And, um, but the campfire really like magnified those issues. Like I could just, as soon as it happened, you know, there's like, oh, Chico just had a absorbed like 20,000 people overnight.
Yeah.
And knowing just the situation in Chico already that people struggle to pay to rent here, struggle to just get leases. We had a near zero vacancy rate before the fire. You can just anticipate what the effects would be. And exactly what happened is there was a significant shift of market power in favor of landlords and against low income rent tenants. They started raising all kinds of barriers so people can't get a place. And, um, and that's where it's like, this is like the the critical issue for how the fire is going to long term impact Chico.
Right.
Um, in the wider region. So we need to have some attention on the housing policy. And they really, you know, a long time, we've had all these issues. And like we talked about with Valley's Edge is people's concerns about how we grow. People's concerns about neighborhood character have led us to suppress the kind of natural housing growth that happens throughout our city, especially in the more like established areas, older neighborhoods. And we've really shifted all policy like, you know, since the 1950s in favor of people driving cars, long distances to get where they need to go. And it's inhibited our ability to naturally address our housing needs. And I think we're at a point where we need to roll back some of those things.
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's so much to it, right? And then, I mean, there's some of us who are fortunate enough to have just the ability to pay rent every month. Some of us who, you know, I was fortunate enough to be able to buy a home only because my father passed away prematurely. There's no way.
That's normal.
Even with, yeah. I mean, with just having a four year degree and going into the field that I went into, there's no way I would be able to come up with a down payment all on my own. Even if I worked every single day from graduation on. And so, yeah, I mean, it is, it is a tough situation. I do like, it's funny because you, you mentioned like post campfire, it was like favored landlords. But I think that there is a certain, there's something kind of cool about like what the city of Chico is doing with the ADUs, like making those sort of planning. Because I think that a lot of people, you know, you, okay, well, I'm going to take on this mortgage and I'm going to get this home. And you have space you don't need. Let's face it. We don't all need all the space that we have for those who are fortunate enough to have some sort of home. I love that idea. Rather than like, let's keep pushing outward and building more and more to like use what's already been developed to the degree that we can.
Yeah. And I think when it comes to like pro housing policy, there is sort of like this, like, there's an anti landlord angle, but I think it's really important to step past that. And you look at, there's the landlords who are just owning property. They, they have it, they have what they have. They don't need to maintain it or anything. And they can just jack up the rent on people. And they're able to essentially exploit the scarcity as it is. But there are other, other people who might, you know, you can be landlords, too. It could be you with a house. If you want to build an ADU and you want to rent it out.
Yeah.
And that's productive. That adds to the housing stock of the area. And that's the sort of thing that we need to encourage because we can't rely on just a few developers to provide all the housing for us.
Yeah.
And really, we get more, I think, I think there's better diversity and like in the organic growth of neighborhoods where a lot of people participate in building up the neighborhood. And that's the best neighborhoods we have. And where I live in the avenues is like that. There's been significant changes over time. Houses have been added on to, new units have been put up. I live in like an upstairs addition that was built on top of a house. It's essentially like a studio apartment, but it has a shared like entryway.
Yeah.
And those sort of things, like, that's great for somebody like me. I don't have kids. I, you know, I live alone, but I have landlords downstairs.
Yeah.
These are like affordable housing options that involve like building onto existing housing. And it's, it hasn't been a focus in a long time. We've looked towards like the government provides big grants. And we charge impact fees in order to extend large scale infrastructure out to build these new subdivisions. And this is the way that we focused on meeting our housing needs.
Yeah.
It's not the way historically we did. Used to have like in Chico, we had streetcar routes, like going up the Esplanade, going down into the Barber neighborhood. And people built around there because the value of that land was high in proximity to the public transit. They didn't need enormous like roads, multi lane highways to get to their neighborhoods. And people built up all around there. And you used to have all kinds of creative ways of accommodating the people who worked in the factories and lived in the community.
Okay, so I love all of these ideas, right? But then sometimes I feel just this skepticism of, well, if it's government mandated, are we really trusting that? Like, let me give you an example. So we had, um, one of my kids had a party at our house the other day, right? And the mom whose daughter's birthday it was, she was so good about like all the recyclables, like she was like, wanted to separate it. And she actually, because like for me, I'm like really good about putting the can in the recycling can, right? But like, is there a little bit of food debris, of food waste that would make it so they're not actually going to recycle it? Like sometimes I don't take those extra steps. And I saw her actually like, that was just how she lived her life. She was really conscious about it and actually taking action. Versus like, well, the state of California mandating a plastic straw ban or whatever, like, and I don't know. I, sometimes I feel like maybe when we have so much government, um, like kind of forcing things versus people actually taking their own actions and being accountable for the issue, it's kind of like, oh, the government will do it for me. Do you ever feel that way?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, there's, there's like, and when it comes to housing, it's like the government mandates we have are limiting housing. It's not really the other way around so much. When it comes to something like plastic straws, like, so like you could see that the government would force us to not use plastic straws to have alternatives. Or it's really forcing the businesses to not rely on this cheap petroleum product that we can use and throw away. And then they end up like killing a bunch of wildlife in the oceans and such. But I see like the, the way we are in, in our society is there are, you know, we have rules and rulers and we have this political system. We don't choose all the rules. We don't choose all the rulers.
Yeah.
We have a big business and industry that that make a lot of those decisions for us. And so there are only so many like straw producers, all these businesses look, they look at their finances. They say, well, it's cheaper to get these plastic straws so we can get that. And I think that, yeah, there are these negative externalities to that and all sorts of things that it causes, it wrecks our world. It's in the process of wrecking our world. And so like the businesses themselves can come up with a solution, say, well, we're producing the plastic straws. It makes economic sense for each business to buy them from us, but then they end up in the ocean.
Right.
And they're killing all this wildlife. And this is bad. So they could decide to solve that themselves. When they don't, I think it makes sense that we make a plan to, um, to address that. But I see the mandate as less on like us as individuals, as on the businesses who we're already serving. They're, they're already creating the conditions that we live under, right?
Sometimes I just feel like they pass these laws to like appease us, though. Like, I was so excited about.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's all kinds of like performative policymaking.
Like the red dye number 40 thing, right? Like, I'm so into clean food. And I was really excited that California was taking these steps to get like three dyes or something out of foods. And it's like, okay, that's nice. And we can celebrate that. But oh, my gosh, what about all the countless other ones? Like, how did those all get bypassed? And like, do we feel safe now?
It's a systemic thing. And I think that's when, when you look at these like little individual fixes, it's like, I can't believe people are spending so much time on this. And it feels like we're getting a more and more complicated apparatus of regulation. In Europe, they just, it's a completely different attitude towards regulation like that. They use the precautionary principle where if you can't prove that this is safe, then it's not going in our food. They just feed us all kinds of poison. And then one day, somebody has enough money to prove.
Proves that it's killing me.
Exactly. And that's it. They have studies that are funded by the people who are making money selling us poison. And, and those studies have to demonstrate that it's poison. So they stop selling it to us.
And we just accept it.
Yeah, yeah. Because it is, I mean, just the United States is more run by big business than anything else. Even, even when we have politicians who can be elected like in opposition to that, like they're operating with these, within these constraints.
Right.
And, you know, I mean, we see in the federal government, there can be big movements to change things dramatically, but not in a way that doesn't favor big business.
Yeah. Yeah. It's interesting. It's, you know, we, we're born into the world and born into the society that we're born into. And I think we, we just start to kind of accept things as like normal and don't ask questions sometimes. But, um, yeah, I don't know.
We're in a rapidly changing world. And I think if we don't, whether it's, uh, you know, complex of government mandates, or some big business consortiums, or everybody individually deciding that we're going to start to live more sustainable lifestyles, something has to change really soon. We can't keep doing things the way we're, we're doing them. I mean, for our area, for the, for the rural North State, things do not look good for most communities, like the economic forecast. It's population decline. It's all sorts of things. We have, um, I mean, if, if some of these Trump administration policies go through, like raising the Shasta Dam and stuff like that, like we could really see salmon extinction in this area. Just irreversible things could happen, which I think in the long run will, will ruin us. But, um, and it's happening on a planet wide scale, too. So, um, we, we need solutions. And I appreciate the politicians who are looking for those solutions. But I also agree that they can get into some minutia that's more about showing off they're doing something than it is about like systematically, you know, like taking private utilities out of our electricity system. Like that would be a big step forward, but that's a, that's a big step.
Isn't that so interesting? I was talking to somebody who works for PG&E about how it's like, how do we have this weird monopoly? Like a family friend of ours just moved to, it's somewhere in Texas. And I think that they were given, they moved into the apartment or wherever it was. And they had like three options for, oh, who do you want your energy provider to be? And I like can't even imagine that. And like the PG&E person here is like, oh, no, 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 it's standard. Like, if you think about the railroads, whatever, it's like somebody lays down the infrastructure and it's just that one company.
The railroads classically like not prone to corruption. Everything's been fine with the railroads, right?
How is there just one option and nothing? I mean, I guess we're trying to do that community choice aggregation.
Community choice aggregation.
It's still PG&E equipment.
It's, it's still the, the poles and wires, the transmission system, everything we can, will still rely on PG&E. Which means that whenever PG&E does something like they're doing this, this year, they say, we need to be able to pay our shareholders more in order to attract investment that we need. So we're going to charge you guys more. So it's like, it's like the more that they do a bad job and people are skeptical about them, the more they have to charge us to pay premiums for people to invest in that.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, it's a totally broken system, but who's doing anything about it? I mean, not, not our representatives.
We feel helpless, right? And you're right.
Yeah.
I mean, our outlet for addressing that feeling of helplessness should be writing our representatives or showing up to city council meetings, county supervisors' meetings.
Pushing a big plan.
Do you feel like when this discussion came up with Chico, was there a lot of community participation?
No, but the community choice aggregation is kind of like a no brainer because it's like, it's, it's almost like a fictitious setup where we buy energy elsewhere. You're not talking about like, so Trinity County did this. They condemned PG&E's equipment, took it over as a public utility. They were able to save their sawmill there because they gave them a rate cut immediately. Later there, a hospital was going to go out of business, the one hospital in Trinity County. And the public utility that they had created by condemning PG&E's equipment, took over the hospital, took kind of control of it until they could set up like a healthcare district that would fund it that way.
Right.
There's remarkable power in control of power, right? But we have to like fight for it, you know, PG&E is not going to give it up. And every, everywhere that ever tries to form public utilities, they run into the private utility suing them every step of the way for Sacramento Municipal Utility District. They formed, and it was almost 30 years before they could actually operate because fighting PG&E in the courts. But that's a fight that we have to have. Right now, like SMUD did that, you know, in the 1920s, they formed. In the 1940s, they were operational. Now they pay less than half of the rates that PG&E customers pay.
Right.
And they have control over it. They're able to reinvest in their community. They're able to, you know, treat their workers well. They have a publicly elected board that everybody loves. It's, it's quite idyllic for being Sacramento County. But this is something that they fought for back in the day and they won. What, what happened to us is we, um, we sold our power system, we sold our water system and that, like in the same era. And we're suffering now for it. And if we want to be out from the yoke of these private monopolies like PG&E, but I'll extend it to all the other monopolies that run the fundamental aspects of our lives. We need, we need to fight for it. We need to have a program. And I think that's a great thing for like North State representation to push. Because we have the fragments of a network of public utilities throughout, um, throughout the North State. Reading serves as a public utility, Shasta Lake, Biggs Gridley, the smallest here. They have joint powers authorities that own power production projects. And if we were able to like join, add some economies of scale to that, like the entire North State could be in a public system of electricity. And we can do that for other things, too. And those, and these are the ways that we're getting gouged in so many, in so many aspects. And this, of course, impacts like businesses and everybody. And this would be the best economic development strategy we could pursue. But, I mean, you know, ask James Gallagher why he doesn't pursue a public takeover of PG&E. And I'm sure he can give you all kinds of philosophical answers.
Something about Newsom and the CPUC and.
Yeah, yeah, right.
You know, it's all the CPUC's fault, which, I mean, I don't know.
Sure. But the CPUC, that's a regulation, public regulation on top of a private utility. It's like, you're like doubling, you're creating a whole bureaucracy to, a public bureaucracy to main, um, to manage a private bureaucracy. And they're the ones making all the money. We spend money to regulate them. It just doesn't make any sense at all. There's, there's, it's, it's just, we've inherited this. And people assume that this is the way it has to be. But in a certain way, it's just because the people invested in PG&E who own it are very powerful. And we don't have people to stand up to them.
Yeah. So, okay, uh, different topic. How are we going to solve the homeless crisis?
How are we going to solve the homeless crisis? That's a great question.
I mean, is it possible? How is it so bad now?
Yeah. I mean, it's, is it, is it possible? It's like, do we have the money to put up what we qualify as like good enough housing with like, you know, we have building code, we have fire code, we have like green building code in California and all these things. And so affordable housing costs a lot to produce, right? You know, if you, if you hear, um, it's like $450,000 a unit, I think is what it averaged, all this affordable housing we built post campfire. Half of that actually is a rental subsidy. So it's really the construction cost like $225,000 a unit. That's a lot of money. Do we have the money? Like, no. Is the state going to give us the money? No. Is the federal government going to give us the money? Like, definitely not at this point. So if we want to solve homelessness, we need to find an alternative acceptable style of, of home. And this is when people talk about managed campgrounds, which is a very low bar for it.
That's what I'm saying.
But these, these different kind of like.
Living in a campground.
No, no, no. But what's the alternative right now, you know?
I feel like there's got to be more to the story, right? Like each, I mean, have you been to the alternative site or City Plaza and talked to some of the people? Will tell me like, I mean, and listen, in my early twenties, I was very much like, stick it to the man and I'm never going to work a nine to five. I've, you know, I was a couch surfer for a while, cocktail waitress. I did, you know, I've lived different life experiences and had different viewpoints on life throughout my life. It's constantly evolving. Um, but I don't know, like I've spoken to so many people who some have said, hey, you know, I came to Chico because like I want to live a free life. And I know that I, I could here and that I can roam around and not be accountable. And other people have just like severe addiction. And maybe it's because of a mental health disorder, or the addiction has caused a mental health disorder. But like people who don't, they feel in that, this time in their life that they don't really want the help. They don't want like, oh, give me in a, a nice apartment I can afford. They don't want to live that sort of lifestyle. And that's kind of what's concerning to me. Like, how do we help those people?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think that's where you're going to feel like it's an unsolvable problem when you can find these, which are like a small proportion of the total cases of people. And also, I've known people who've told me like, oh, I don't want to live in a house. This is, this is a woman who's been homeless since she was a teenager and she's my age. And so she tells me that she just, she feels constrained in the walls and stuff. And I see that as like, you can take that at face value. Or you can say, it's like, well, what she understands is the conditions for getting there, the kind of abuse that she's suffered in her life makes her feel like that's not, that's not a good option. Yeah. And, and it's, and I think that, um, that's not the reality for, for those people. And even then, that's a very small proportion. So like, you know, Chat made a, a essentially like a business out of, um, getting leases on places and being able to master lease them to people who have the income, social security, disability, or whatever. But they can't get a lease to a place because like, especially since the campfire, like the bar, the barrier of entry of any kind of lease is just very high. Like, you can't get in without a cosigner. And most people who work here probably can't get in without their, their parents saying that they'll pay the rent if they, um, if they fail to. And people don't have that on the street, right? I mean, the most, they wouldn't be there if they had family that was that supportive.
Right.
So I think there are, there's like large groups of people that we can take care of without having to worry about that. And I think one, one way that we've been stuck is because we're in the settlement agreement, because the city was overzealous and completely irrational about their policy back in, in 2021. Moving out like 50 plus people with literally nowhere to go. Like, and they didn't pretend to tell people there was a place either. They kind of pretend like in concept, there was, they want to tell people where. And, and so then in the settlement agreement, we have to have these low barrier shelters where like everybody, it's like everybody has to get a pass in. But when you talk about shelter projects, it's like, you think of it more like housing. You try to think about something closer to permanent housing. You don't have to let everybody in there. And if people are going to be like really difficult, then it's like, those don't need to be the people that you're putting resources into taking care of. But you can still take care of the people who are not difficult or who are difficult only because they have mental health issues. And really, the people that the society needs to help, it used to be family units or the churches would take care of these people. And it's just not the way in the United States of America today. So we need to find an alternative way to, to address that. And I don't even think it's a matter of the government providing all this because we have groups, nonprofits like Chat.
Yeah.
And others who, who want to pursue these projects. And like, sure, it helps to have public funds. Everything's going to be better than more money you're able to put on it. You know, maybe not a, you know, smooth return, but, um, that's helpful. People would do it. People would do something that's better than people sleeping on the street in the parks being moved around again and again. And at a certain point, um, the, the one barrier to that happening, besides like it couldn't be perfect because we don't have the money, is that the government regulations say you can't, that's not a house. You can't be there.
Right.
You say the Eaton Cohasset, what's going on out of there? It's like, that's, you know, not, not legal. Even living in an RV in your backyard, that's illegal. So when people say like, oh, you like homeless so much, why don't you have them camping in your backyard? Is, well, the local government says that is illegal. That's, there's no, there's no way around that. We have an emergency declaration on shelter that says that we could permit things like that. But we just don't. And I think there's a concern that it's a slippery slope. If we start to allow somebody to live in an RV, we just start to allow somebody to live in a tiny house, then all of a sudden we have no standard for like good enough housing in our community. And I think the slippery slope that we're on right now is that we, we have accepted it as normal that people sleep outside in the cold, that people die every year.
I think that's crazy, right? That shouldn't be. I, I really just don't, I don't buy, even if somebody says, I get the, the hippie mentality of, sure, you want to be a world traveler and like live free. I get that. But I, I think that that is such a small minority. I think that, I just feel that.
It could be accommodated in a hostel, maybe. We could, we could try to embrace that. People might come and stay in Chico because it's a beautiful place. But you don't need to be camping in the park. Maybe you can work at a hostel.
Like, there's got to be something going on with, I don't know if like it's how we're raising our kids or the, you know, so many drugs out there or something in the food that's causing mental illness. Something has changed. And I feel like that these people are struggling with more than just, I can't afford rent. I feel like there's something on the inside that is holding them back, that needs to be helped somehow. Like, I don't, I don't know. I feel like the resources for dealing with mental help or, or health or like, how do you get somebody if they need a prescription medication to take it if they don't have an address and, you know, they can't go to the doctor.
Take medicine. That's a really important like human rights issue, I think.
Well, yeah, right. But I'm, I'm just saying like, how do you, you know, if somebody doesn't want to get sober, right? So, and like their way of dealing with whatever their mental health issue is, is maybe drinking, but you can't force them to get sober. And if they can't get sober, then they're not going to be able to get a job to afford even the tiny home rent, you know? Even if it's just a hundred bucks a month, that's a ton of money for somebody who's not working. It's, it's tricky. And I mean, I guess it's just that root cause. I wish that we had better answers on it.
Yeah. I mean, ultimately, it's like, yeah, there's a lot of things that we can do to try to like pick up the pieces that we've lost as, as housing has become just out of reach for people. And we can try to be like, well, this is a little project that fits for these people. We can have a special project for these people. It can be by referral. And we can, we can make a, a safe situation for, for these folks. And we can try to, if there's, people are just drunkards and there's nothing you can do about it, then maybe, yeah, we can just, just have the place for them or something like that. Really, the, the, the best thing we can do to address it in the long run is, is to build more housing. Not just housing like, you know, big three bedroom houses for people who, the market with people who can pay $500,000 or more for a house, but, but cheap forms of housing. We're doing this in the city of Chico now, actually. We, we just like broadly legalized by right, single room occupancies. And this is like, you have a bedroom, you share a bathroom, maybe you share a kitchen. This is what people used to live in, in what were these big historic hotels downtown. And single individuals brought by and large would, especially if they're coming through town for a shorter time for a job or something, would live in these places. They're cheap. It's, you know, it's not giving you like the whole, you don't need your own kitchen, you know, you can, you can share things like that. And we've broadly throughout the country, we've suppressed these things, knocked them down, condemned them. They were called flop houses. And we, we've kind of derided them. And there was this effort that's like, you clean up your town by knocking these things down. And so we did. Largest buildings in Chico were knocked down for parking lots. And those provided housing for people. And now we're like, oh, wake up. And then all of a sudden, there's no housing for all these people. So starting to build these things again and starting to really focus on addressing not just like enough for the market, but like a surplus of these like low income dwellings. I think we will see significantly less issue. And if you want some statistics on that, look at Detroit and San Francisco. Or Detroit has very high rates of drug addiction and mental illness. It's very, very bad out there. And these are things that oftentimes people associate with homelessness, right? But the rent is so low, Detroit has a significantly lower homelessness rate than a city like San Francisco. Or take another city like Chico, that's less, you know, you don't think of as a druggie or mental health issue place. But the rent being high is the core factor in having widespread homelessness.
Okay.
And addressing that is the best thing we can do to reduce it.
You know, I've got to ask you about, we just received another email about, and, uh, about the pending class action lawsuit from the Hula's owner or whatever.
Oh, sure, yeah.
I understand that there are certain things that you probably can't comment on with pending litigation, but I mean, how the heck? The sewer thing, it didn't seem. The sewer thing, it didn't seem that significant, like, I don't feel like my sewer rates went up very much, maybe doubled. It seemed fair, twenty, thirty bucks a month or something is what I pay for my sewer. Why are these businesses in a small space, like, how could they be paying thousands suddenly for the sewer rate?
Well, I mean, if, if you're paying that much, one, it's different per business, you know? And, and then it's about water usage, in the winter, we try to isolate irrigation from it. And, yeah, overall, in this, this whole thing, I, I hate to tell people, you know, costs are something we have to deal with, but like, our sewers are a public utility. We could have a private utility run our sewers. In fact, Cow Water, our local private water provider, wanted to buy our sewer system just right before I got into, into council. And I, I think I was one of the only people in the community who paid attention to that and like had, like statements, this, this is a terrible idea. The only reason a private company would buy our sewer system is to charge us more in the end.
Yeah.
But we're still in this situation where we had, you know, public officials had been very generous to businesses like Hula's and people like us who live in houses, and they had not raised rates. So we had the lowest rates in the whole region.
Yeah.
But we didn't have the money to maintain our sewer system. So we had like significant leaks happening, which is very bad in the long run.
Right.
We couldn't maintain, we couldn't expand as necessary our sewer system. It's an enterprise fund, which means that all the money that goes in that's charged sewer fees is for sewers, not for anything else. It doesn't, it doesn't go anywhere, nobody's profiting off of it. This is like essentially our nonprofit sewer provider. So, Hula's has complained that they have a high baseline. You know, there's, there's one charge you get monthly, and then there's like your volumetric charge based on how much water you use. And they complained that the, the baseline is too high. It's like, well, if we didn't have that baseline, it's got to be more volumetric. It's like, well, but you, you say, they use so much water, more than a typical restaurant, that's why their bills are, are higher. And if you didn't charge that, then it's like we have to have a higher volumetric charge. And the other option is, and why you haven't experienced the same kind of rate increase, is like, well, we could shift it more onto residential. And I think because we have not even raised the rates sufficiently to cover all the maintenance costs we have, we know we're going to have to raise rates again, because we can't let our sewer system collapse.
Right.
And the conversation now that I think how Hula's has influenced that is like, well, maybe we should put a burden heavier on the residential. So you'd be paying more.
Yeah.
And of course, it's going to be a smaller overall bill, but it's like you don't have revenue coming in for your house, it's just your house.
Yeah.
We, like, bottom line is if we want to have, we want to have public utilities, we want to not be subject to the decisions of private utilities and have to pay off investors, then we need to responsibly maintain them, and that requires us raising rates in accordance with the costs, you know? If we ever found we raised too much money, we would, we would drop rates. We would give you, you give you a waiver, like, nobody pays rates for a year or something, that's just not the way that things go. And, yeah, I mean, I, and I, I don't know that Hula's, I, lawsuit wouldn't go anywhere, because we've had a, a couple of, of people who are, don't, were confused about the rate structure. And I, and I was too, when we raised the rates, I looked at it and I'm like, why is, you know, I'll tell you, like, I, I looked at the, the different rates for different businesses.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be based on how much treatment is required for their water usage, you know? If you're a dry cleaner, like, that water is very dirty, right? So, not a lot of water, but it's very dirty, so the, so the more you use, it's, it's going to be higher charge per gallon. And, and I looked and I was like, why is breweries so low? And I was wondering if maybe somebody had some influence in us like setting a low rate for breweries. And I looked into it and it was like, no, we just imported kind of like the, the standard across the state that's developed by like engineering associations. And, and then we had a, yeah, we had another business complaint, so we had this whole discussion, internal affairs, where we got like the full broader presentation on like how we calculated all these. And it, it just makes sense, we could shift it in different ways, but again, it's either you're paying more as a base rate, so businesses who use more water are going to be penalized less for that, like, that's a possibility. Or we put more of the burden on houses.
Okay.
And we just, we just have to decide that. Having sewers is a cost of doing business, you can't live in a city without sewers very well, or you end up problems like Chapman Town. You have poisoned soil and the children aren't able to play in the dirt.
Interesting, gosh, yeah. We've got to wrap this up, but I, let me ask you, just looking forward to the year ahead. You've said it's been a struggle to even get something that you bring up even on to a future agenda. If you could have one thing that you're just so passionate about, what, what could we see?
I like that you, I mean, you bring that up, actually, that's good, because I said that, we're talking about the first two years. Since this last election, the council has, has totally changed. We can say very, very narrowly, there was like the same sort of majority, Republican majority held, whatever you want to call it. And that's true, but the attitude is just different. And part of it's like, Tom Van Overbeck and I have, have a good working relationship. And, and I'd say I do, to some extent or other, with, with other people too. Yeah, Casey Reynolds being the mayor has been, has been good, she's been very like, like fair in her managing of the meetings and there's.
Do you feel like Andrew Coolidge wasn't?
Sometimes, not, if, if I could have, he, he would have been my top pick out of the six of them for, for the mayor, so I'll give him that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, I, I don't know that initially like I thought that, but, but in the end, yeah. But Bryce Goldstein, Katie Holly and I, we have been pursuing like little policy initiatives, like Katie brought up a streetlights, right? And we had this streetlight conversation, we're looking at kind of bolstering that, trying to fill in these gaps.
Oh, that campus area with the, where some people are supposed to stop and others don't, are you talking about there?
Well, all, all kinds, all kinds of places, yeah, yeah. And then, and then like, I brought up like street sweeping, it's like, we haven't really been able to effectively street sweep in areas that are like inundated with cars.
Yeah.
And, and we also leave piles of leaves in bike lanes and we're like, we're solving these problems.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't even say there's just one thing, we have active efforts ongoing with this council that is exactly the sort of things that I want to be doing in the local government. We're talking about safe streets projects, I have a discussion on protected bike lanes by Chico High School, where we've had some really significant accidents just in like last couple of weeks even, not to mention like years, down Warner to, to Chico State. Things that we can do, it's very inexpensive, it's just a decision that we're, we want to prioritize, putting in some kind of barrier so people can safely ride bikes. We're talking about reforming a lot of these land use regulations, there's sort of this ongoing, we just approved some, some updates that I, I mentioned. And then we have an ad hoc growth community development committee that Tom Van Overbeck and I are, are co-chairs of. And we're going to bring forward recommendations, which I'm really optimistic about, starting to address some of these issues that have really pushed up the price of housing and limited the places where people like, like me and more working-class people can live in Chico.